I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Ms. Raboladi?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatzman?
Yes. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from our April 15 regular meeting.
Some move.
Thank you, Ms. Raboladi. And a second?
All second.
Mr. Workman? Thank you. Were there any corrections or additions?
Okay, hearing none. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Raboladi?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatzman?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay. Moving on to the reason that we really want to celebrate tonight.
Good evening and welcome, everybody. I'll let the others use the microphone here, but May is always a special month, a little bittersweet for a lot of us. We have retirees who have just dedicated their lives, wonderful career, and today kind of marks that milestone. And so we celebrate them and we wish them well and a little bittersweet for them because we hate to lose them and I know a lot of them hate to leave at the same time. So in May, we like to go ahead and recognize, we have four that we'll be recognizing here tonight. One wasn't able to be with us. And we have the building leader or director of that specific individual, retiree, come to just share a little bit about our retiree. We bring our retiree up and then I get to ask them a question or two, but not maybe not too many questions, but probably ask you kind of what are you thinking about doing in retirement? What are you looking forward to the most? And you can share and then we have a little gift, a small gift of appreciation. Once we get done with all four of our retirees, we'll kind of take a quick 15-minute break from our regular board meeting. We've got some cake and punch and some things and get an opportunity just to congratulate and wish our retirees the best. So with that being said, we're going to go ahead and get started. And so Darren Prince, do you want to come on up here and you can share about our first retiree? I don't know if you'll need this or not.
I'm good.
You probably don't. Why don't we put you right out front here?
No, no, I start. Good evening. My name is Darren Prince. I am the middle school principal and I have the distinct honor of recognizing one, Ms. Tammy Henry, who will be retiring this year. So she has been in service at Mount Vernon City for 23 years with a total in education of 28 years, which is phenomenal. So I can only share my six years of experience of knowing Tammy. And when I first came to the middle school, she was English Language Arts teacher. And at the end of that first year, we reorganized and we went into having teachers move around and we unblocked and we needed somebody to teach science. And I would have never have known, but I went to Tammy and was talking with her and she said, you know what? I would really be interested and have a passion for science. And I was taken aback by that because her passion for ELA was just incredible. And then she told me her background before she started teaching and how she would do labs and was in the medical field. I was like, this is incredible. What a gem to be able to find within our, with our own staff. And so I've also been able to have a different experience because my nephew is in her class this year. And so he got to have her for the very last year. And my thing is, is in middle school, if a teacher can make it home to the dinner table, right, then you know you're not in outer park. And I can't tell you how many different times that my nephew's come home to share a story about Mrs. Henry's class and how much he loves science now because of being there. And so that's just a testament to you. But I don't know all the good stories, so I pass it on to one of her colleagues, Ms. Erica Gray, to finish off.
Thank you. So I've taught with Tammy for my whole nine years. First, we were in our team together where she taught ELA, I taught science. When she decided to switch to science, it was amazing because she brought all that enthusiasm for ELA to science and we started to bring way more ELA and science combined, which was a service to all kids, not just your team. She has been a wonderful person to be on a team with and a PLC. She's just so fun, happy all the time and so many jokes, so many things where she's just as a joy to work with. She has helped me so much in growing as a professional and I know I will miss you dearly. Honestly, when you brought it up, I was like, oh, you're retiring? No. It'll be weird, but I'm so happy for you and I'm so happy for all the things you're going to do with the rest of your life and I just am so excited that you get a new chapter in your life.
Come on up here, Tammy. You joined us in 2001. You've been here for 23 years. I have a granddaughter in Mrs. Henry's house, but she may not even know. And you have been the topic of dinner conversations in a good way. And so you do obviously leave a real testament to the kids and some of the things they talk about.
I really do love them. I really, really do. I've loved the kids. I've loved working with them. It's been, it's been wonderful.
So tell us, what are the plans in retirement?
Well, my daughter, my oldest daughter lives in Europe, so I'm, I'm leaving on a plane June 2nd. So I'm going to go to the British Isles first and then in the fall, we're going to go to the south of France and Italy and the Mediterranean area.
Wow. Good for you. Good for you. Esther didn't tell you had to stay five days longer? I guess that's not true. Well, on behalf of Mount Vernon, we want to give you a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm not going to get you too bad. All right. If I could have Carly come up or Carly and her team come up and we'll get to share a little bit about Ms. Jenny. I have the wrong school.
You do.
How the heck is that? I better fix that right this second.
I was going to say better. Better fix that. Definitely. So, good evening. It's not Pleasant Street. She is East, so please ignore that, but. All right, we're going to do this. Today, we're going to celebrate the legacy, kindness, dedication, and unwavering positivity of this remarkable educator. For 32 years, Jenny Merrilies has been a beacon of light in our school's community. As she embarks on the next chapter of her journey, it's only fitting that we take a moment to reflect on the impact that she's made and the countless lives that she has touched. Jenny started her career one cold January as a long-term substitute in sixth grade right here in Mount Vernon City School District. After that, she worked for two years in preschool within Knox County, specifically with students with special needs. At that point, a fifth grade position opened up at East and Jenny spent seven years at that grade level before she had the opportunity to move down to first grade where she's taught for the past 25 years. In the fast-paced world of education where challenges can often seem insurmountable, Jenny has remained a steadfast source of encouragement and optimism. Whether it was greeting her students with a warm smile each morning or offering words of encouragement during times of struggle, she has always embodied the true spirit of teaching, to inspire, to uplift, and to empower. In Mrs. Merrilies' classroom, every child was not just a student, but a cherished individual with unique talents and potential waiting to be unlocked. She believed in the power of positivity, fostering an environment where every accomplishment, no matter how small, was met with genuine praise and enthusiasm. Through her unwavering belief in their abilities, she has instilled in her students the confidence to dream big and reach for the stars. But Jenny's impact extended far beyond the walls of her classroom. She was a mentor to new and her fellow educators, always willing to lend a listening ear or offer words of wisdom gained through her years of experience. Her positive attitude is infectious, uplifting the spirits of those around her and reminding us all of the profound difference that a kind word or gesture can make in someone's day. As we bid farewell to Jenny, we do so with a mixture of sadness and gratitude. Sadness because her presence will be greatly missed within the halls of East and gratitude for the immeasurable contributions she's made in the lives of so many. She may be retiring from her official duties, but her legacy of kindness, compassion, and positivity will continue to live on in the hearts of all who have had the privilege of knowing her. Hold on, people, we're not done. So thank you, Mrs. Merrilies, for being a true exemplar for what it means to be an educator, a mentor, and a friend. May your retirement be filled with joy, laughter, and all the happiness you so richly deserve. Thank you for your 32 years of dedicated service. You've truly made a difference in the lives of countless children and your legacy will continue to inspire generations to come.
So I got a chance to really get to know Jenny a little bit better this past fall as we got to go to Washington DC and celebrate East Blue Ribbon Award. And so we had occasion to go out to dinner, right, as a big group and I could tell at that point that Jenny was contemplating retirement, but it really weighed heavy. She misses the kids. She speaks so highly of her colleagues. It's such a family. And there's just a quiet kind of humility with Jenny, but with her kids, it just shows so evident. So we're not done yet. I think you're going to come back and sub. I think we've already got you on hold. But again, on behalf of Mount Vernon, we'd like to give you this small token of appreciation. But before I give it to you, what are your plans in retirement?
Spend time with grandbabies and my parents. I just want to be able to go have coffee with them.
How many grandbabies are we talking?
So two with another one on the way.
Two with another one on the way. So yeah, we might not get as much subbing as I thought. But again, congratulations and well done.
Thank you.
So I prepared a speech for Scott and I think Scott left. But I'm going to tell you a little bit about Scott. I've been with Mount Vernon City Schools for 10 and a half years. Scott, I know he was here for 18, so I've got to work with him that long. Scott was, he was a driver that truly cared about his kids on his bus. I actually drove his old route, which Scott hasn't driven for about a year and a half because of health reasons. But I drove his route today and his kids are, after a year and a half, are still asking about him because of the kind of driver that he was. When, when I would get in his bus and drive his route, the kids, they showed so much respect and, and I've talked to Scott numerous times about how does he do this? And it was all about giving them respect, getting respect back. And it was how he did, how he did the discipline with them. It wasn't, it wasn't jumping down their throats or anything. It was, he had this knack for being able to do it and, and the kids really respected him and they loved him and I think that they still do. Just like I said, Scott's going through some health issues. He came into the bus garage today and, and he asked me, he says, do you know what's going on tonight? And I said, no, I have not a clue. I said, Mr. Cedar just asked me to stop by. I didn't want to give anything away. And that may have bitten me because I did see him and he laughed. But I do know Scott is coming back to be a sub-driver once he gets through this health issue. When he was in the day, he said everything was looking up, which, which is great. So I can't say enough good about Scott. Scott was a very, very good driver and I wish he was here for me to tell him congratulations and I wish him the best in all ways. Thank you.
Probably not surprised that Scott figured out what was going on. He does wear his emotions on his sleeve and as Todd had mentioned, he had gone through some really challenging health kinds of issues and hopefully they're moving in the right direction, but he did need to retire and kind of as you look there, Scott would send me emails just randomly throughout the year on ways that we could try to do this to be better for our kids. Even as a bus driver, he always was thinking about, could we do this? Could we kind of shed a light here? He's super proud of his family and they served in the military, which he is incredibly proud of. And so the fact that he didn't make it today, I mean, I think that's probably a little bit indicative of just his kind of shy humbleness, but he has a faith through this challenge that I think is certainly commendable and I'm hopeful and prayerful that, you know, he will lick this issue and we'll bring him back as a sub. And so maybe it's kind of a semi-retirement-retirement situation. So congratulations to Scott. And then our last one for tonight is Mr. Posderek. So if I could have. So I've gotten also to know Mike over the past couple of years. We kind of have this connection with doing wood. Now, I would always sneak into his shop after nine hours and he'd go and give me a call and say, were you in the shop? The floors aren't quite as clean as they should have been. You need to clean that now. He didn't do that to me, but Mike has been a real asset to the district. And as you look at the year, the year's really long. You haven't looked up.
I've been here, I've been in Mount Vernon for 35 years and I had three years before I came, so I've done 38.17. And I do do numbers. I just finished my 38th year.
That's amazing. So we had that, 38 years is incredible in today's day and age and he really did look pretty good now. I went back, as far as I can go back, because I, the rest of them didn't work in the high school. So knowing you worked in the high school, I went back to try to find pictures of your books for when you first started at the high school. And well, let's just say I decided not to put that one up there. But you look as handsome today as you did back then. So Mike, what do you want to do in retirement?
Well, I've been going to school for 55 years and sometimes two schools. So this is bittersweet. We, my wife and I, we just decided that I'm going to retire at spring break. This has not been long. The fourth day of school, I was diagnosed with cancer. All is good. Prognosis is great. I have a July checkup. My kids, whoever calls me first, that's the project for the weekend for the Saturday. I cut down a tree last Friday. Last Saturday, I put up a swimming pool, moved four tons worth of dirt and sand. I'm busy. Six remodel jobs in seven years. I rebuilt their three homes. So my two daughters said, you got to save them. Don't wear them out. He's got to do it two more times.
Well, I think you're going to stay really busy in retirement and I know, you know, your scare earlier in the year, you handled it with grace, man. I mean, strong faith, always was a positive outlook. I know his wife was really instrumental in kind of that faith as well. And so I know you're not done and we certainly would welcome you back as a sub or just as a consultant for different things, so. There might be a price tag on that one, right?
I think you've been talking to my wife.
Well, on behalf of Mount Vernon City Schools, just a small token of our appreciation. Thank you. Appreciate you. And then the last person we had up here this year was Ron Folds. Now, Ron hasn't been with the district all that long. When we had some transitions to high school, Ron came in and filled in at the right time for us. He has 35 years in education. He wasn't able to make it tonight, but Ron was a kid connector. He was one that just kind of had this even-tempered keel and I think maybe even the speak decor it. I don't know, put him on the spot and speak for him, but he kind of brought that experienced presence and that kind of calming behavior. And so we really, we really relish that and we wish him the best as he retires. Full secret about Ron, a lot of people don't know, he was a missionary before he got into education. And so he did a lot of missionary work in other countries, especially in kind of the foster area. And so he has a real heart for kids and so we're excited for him as he retires and he's got the same kind of list. He's got grandchildren, children who have all kinds of things for him to do. So again, let's give a nice round of applause all over the country. Say that again?
Do the Wigan Street first and then?
You want to do Wigan Street right before we do this? Okay, let's do that. And you all will love to hear the Wigan Street story here, so we'll kind of skip around in our heat here and we're going to have Wigan Street go ahead and go. Then we'll take a quick little 15-minute break and then we'll recognize and be able to spend a little time with our honorees.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good evening. So I just wanted to thank you all for allowing us to share with you about some things that are happening at Wigan Street. And last year when we were here, I had our fourth grade leaders share about peer mediators. And so tonight, we have some third grade leaders that are going to share their presentation that they developed, they created the slideshow about their leadership being kinder buddies. And so I'm going to turn it over to third grade. I want to tell you a little bit about our program before the kids get started. So at Wigan Street School, the kindergarten and third grade classes meet every Friday as a part of our multi-age approach to teaching our social, emotional curriculum, second step. Multi-age learning has many benefits. It develops leadership skills. The kindergarten children will eventually make the transition from observer to leader. It builds strong relationships with a wider range of peers. The peer learning that happens allows the older children to become mentors and role models for the younger children and the younger children benefit by observing and learning from the older children. It has a lot of inclusivity. Multi-age classrooms can be more inclusive as students with diverse abilities and learning styles can be accommodated. This promotes a sense of belonging for all students. Our kinder third grade buddy program provides and fosters crucial skills, positive relationships, leadership, and empathy among the children and the adults of Wigan Street School. These skills can sometimes be lacking in anyone who did not have enough play in their early years. The lessons, while scripted in the second set program, are enhanced to fit the needs of the children. Having choice is crucial to our program. We want the children to know that their ideas are worthy, causing them to be motivated and take ownership of their learning. It gives them the opportunity to develop thinking skills and foster independence. Their ideas help guide the specific direction of the lessons. We recognize what they deem essential and what they need further developed. Our lessons are connected to books or events that happen in the classroom, making the learning more relevant. We provide intentional play-based opportunities for the children to practice these skills. Strategies can be taught all day long, but if children never get the opportunity to practice them, they will not internalize those skills. Our brains are designed to be built from the bottom up. Social, emotional skills must precede cognitive learning. To utilize your cortex, it is vital that the brainstem is in a calm state. Our program provides for the kids a safe and connected environment to allow higher-level learning in the brain. Cognitive outcomes and learning go hand in hand with SEL. Peter Gray, psychology researcher and scholar, says it best. Play is how children practice all essential human skills. To be effective, these skills must be developed, refined, and adapted to the local environment or experience, and that experience for children is play. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our students and with a little guidance, and if you're a teacher, you know it needs a lot of work also. These kids came up with all of these ideas. Everything is theirs. They made it and every time they asked me how they should do it, I said it was totally up to them. So totally student-made and driven and they worked really, really hard.
You guys can come in front of the mic if you want. There you go. It's up behind you, whatever you need.
Hi, I'm Rosa White. I'm in the summer for third grade class. These kids are going to introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Cora.
Hi, my name is Eboni.
Every Friday at Wigan Street School, the third grade and kindergarten get together and teach each other. We teach each other about kindness and caring for others, about second step learning and how to be a leader. Kindergarten dolls, learning with relationships between each other and making matters of third grade.
Learning with relationships. And three of these pictures, we did a buddy, we did a buddy's outside. And the other pictures, we did, we got a buddy and a neighbor about organizing emotions. How will third grade help the kindergarten at the beginning of the year? At the beginning of the year, we help the kinders a lot at lunchtime. At lunchtime, we help them punch in the number and we sat with them and we asked them for reasons to walk into the bathroom. And then we help them put their lunchbox together and we show them to play.
What do you think is important about making friends with the kinders?
I think it's important to let them be more comfortable with older kids. I think it's important to make them more confident.
I think it's important to get them a new thing to...
I'm just speaking out of the...
What do you think is important about making friends?
How are relationships with kindergarten helping throughout third grade?
Having relationships with kinders, talking about a sponsor, we find some favorite kids. It's not that it's okay because until you don't get what you want, someone doesn't get it.
And all of our kids at these classes, we practice, we take our courage for them. In our next class, we did a camp and we learned how to be good, how to handle discipline. That's what we should do.
the tictac, and we learned how to be good, how to handle disappointment. That's what we structured. Please, third grade folks, kindergarten at recess. Sometimes kindergartners come up to me because they don't have anyone to play with. At recess, I see kinders standing on the bench or squatting in the muscle, so I go over and try to open up. And sometimes kinders come up to me, justify. Either way, I'm always in love. These are some pictures that we took of third graders and kindergartners from kindergarten recess. Welcome to kindergarten.
Hi, I'm Dana Reese. I am currently Mrs. Travers' class, and I am excited to present to you. Teaching and learning together. An important part of kinder buddies is learning. We learn and teach each other about recognizing emotions and about our senses and how they help us. We learn how to handle our emotions and how to talk about and explain ourselves. We also enjoy learning about playing, which involves being good sports and also having fun. Handling and recognizing our emotions. We learn a lot about recognizing emotions like when you're angry or disappointed. We also learn strategies to help us calm down by deep diving and early skills. We also teach each other about how to talk about when we're angry. When we play games together, not everyone wins. That helps us when we are working on handling our emotions. In this picture, we're having a snowball fight in the gym. Playing with good sports and friendship. We recently had a tic-tac-toe tournament with the kindergartners. We had to handle disappointment. Eat good sports when you lose. In the end, there'd only be one winner. We play lots of games together to learn about handling those emotions and being good sports. At recess, we also learn about handling emotions, being good sports, and of course, we have lots of fun. These are pictures from the tic-tac to tournament. Cora, what was your favorite part of the tic-tac to tournament? Turn to me. What was your favorite part of the tic-tac to tournament?
When I won.
Second step learning. Our curriculum is second step learning. We learn lessons about kindness, listening, solving problems, and other important skills. We also learn things about including everyone and being caring. Every Friday, we will learn or teach a lesson beforehand with recess with kindergarten. These are pictures of the signs we made using our senses to pay in the gym. In conclusion, we teach each other a lot about important things, not only about responsibility and school subjects, but also about kindness and care for each other. We hope that when we get older, we will know skills that help us have a good circle of life and that will help us improve the years at school. Now, Cora is going to present.
Hi, I'm Laura Lemon. I'm in the child walkers class. Being leaders of third grade and kindergarten. Kinder buddies makes both the third graders and the kindergartners that are leaders. By participating, third graders and kindergartners learn to practice being better leaders. In the first picture, third is teaching the other classes. In the second picture, kindergarten speaks. Being leaders is how we're taught to give good instructions. Being leaders is how we make independent choices about working. Each class chooses plants and teaches lessons to each other. This carries to the Kinder City Project. The Kinder City Project is where kinders make a city in the family, pretend to do real jobs, and make pretend money. They have to work together to make decisions for their family about making money and spending it. Like, can they afford it? In one picture, kinders are going for the car wash. In the other one, there's Subway or a restaurant. In these pictures, different groups of people are teaching the other classes. Peer mediation is a program run by Ms. Thompson with fourth graders at Wigan Street. The peer mediators look just on the playground. They're very interested in their day. Their job is to help other students solve problems that don't need an adult's help. Being leaders of third grade and seventh grade are next year for peer mediation. In conclusion, we all love teaching each other. We've all gotten very close to each other.
This program allows us to learn through relationships and learning by teaching each other. It also helps us to develop leadership skills in both third grade and junior. These are some skills that we will use throughout our lives. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. How did you go about creating your car wash? Did you create the car wash? Did you make it with help? Did somebody help you?
Did you do the city project?
Okay, okay.
They could tell that they did the city project.
A waitress.
Three people.
Okay. Did any of you get wet in the car wash? Did you get wet? Okay. In the future, if I need my car washed, will you come and help me? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Pretty awesome to have kids actually doing this kind of work. Can we send some of our adults to your peer mediation because we needed in a lot of instances. A job well done. Kids really, really appreciate it. Thanks to the Wigan Street staff for all that's going on out there at Wigan Street. You're doing some really wonderful things. So with that being said, we're gonna take just about fifteen minutes here and congratulate some of our student helpers, but also we've got some cake, we've got some punch, we've got some water. Get a chance to kinda congratulate and celebrate our retirees. We'll start back up at approximately about six fifty.
Moving right along. I do not see Mateo here, and Jessica Mike left, so I do not see him. So we have one signed up for public participation. Andrea, your audience has.
That's totally possible. I gotta say though, I emailed, I talked to myself, I'm not showing up anymore.
You can go ahead. If you wanna go up here, feel free. Then it can be recorded. And you'll be on video.
Oh, no.
I sent it to myself. Oh, that's a good idea. Thank you. You're so smart. It's not loading, though. That's why.
It's the signal.
I've got a.
Let's see. Turn my Wi-Fi signal off.
You know what the password is here by chance?
Oh, I see what you're saying. That, unMPD guest. Maybe I should just turn that off altogether.
And restart it, maybe.
This is a terrible spot for phone reception.
That's why we really moved to the fieldhouse, right?
Got it. Okay. Uh, hi, I'm Andrea White. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, and I do wanna say, both my children went to Wigan Street. Um, Wigan Street teachers are goddesses. Lori Zulman, and her developmentally appropriate approach is just amazing, and I wish I could take it and put it in the middle school. Um, so on Friday, we had seven writers attend Power of the Penn State Competition. My daughter, Naomi McFarlane, was one of them, and we did have Miriam Vanderhoof, who came in fourth place for the entire state for her writing, so that's pretty amazing. I was saddened to read this morning that Mr. Burris and Ms. Rockte are leaving the middle school. Their absence will be sorely felt. I had my own little emotions this morning about that. They are true student advocates who really see and understand their students. With Ms. Rockte's leaving, several clubs may leave as well. Tattered Pages, Knit and Crochet, and the Diversity Club that the school had already canceled. I strongly encourage the school to look for more opportunities for middle schoolers to socialize with each other and be physically active. And my push, I would love to see a middle school swim team. We already have the pool contract, the lanes. We have an assistant coach who is dedicated to developing newer swimmers, and a middle school swim team would create a much-needed feeder into the strong high school swim and dive teams, and it would, it'd be a pretty easy add. That said, I am also here to address a critical issue regarding the current cafeteria lunch policy that's new as of last week. Recently, a troubling incident occurred involving a middle schooler whose lunch was taken away while they were eating it and discarded because their lunch account balance was zero or into the negative. This policy of denying food and then taking it from them while they're eating is completely unacceptable. First, taking away a child's lunch and throwing it in the trash is wasteful and sends a harmful message. No child should be humiliated in front of their peers for eating a meal, especially one that was already distributed to them. This practice is mean spirited, as experienced as bullying, and exacerbates feelings of anxiety and embarrassment, particularly for students who may already be facing personal or mental health challenges. Second, the communication surrounding the policy change was unclear and misleading. My own son, who's a tenth grader and highly functioning, misunderstood the no charging policy to mean that lunches were free. In fact, that's what he told me when he got in the car that afternoon. Hey, guess what, mom? Lunches are free for the rest of the year. And I said, what? Like, that doesn't, that doesn't ring. I went to the last board meeting. There was nothing about that. And he said, well, there's no charging. He understood the no charging policy to mean that lunches were free, when in fact, students are being denied food if their accounts are not preloaded with funds. So this confusion adds unnecessary stress and misunderstanding among the students and the parents. Many districts are now covering the cost of school lunches, recognizing that for many children, this is their only reliable meal of the day. We could do that. A child who is hungry cannot focus, learn, or participate effectively in their education. I really urge the board to reconsider and revise this policy immediately. Please work toward a solution that supports all students and ensures that no child is left hungry or humiliated at school. Thank you.
Moving on, items for discussion. I see no items for information or approval at this time.
I'm there. I do have one addition to the board agenda tonight. A certificated licensed staff, substitute teacher Gary Evans, will be placed in your board agenda in section eleven B two F. And then under superintendent's report, I have an update to share. I might, you know, given, I usually like to wait until my update before I might share what. So I became aware of that particular situation, and so we do allow students to charge up to three times. We never allow a student to go without food, but if they're over their three charges, usually during that process, they encourage them to fill out the free and reduced lunch forms, but they'll never go without food, but they get a, like a cold lunch. Usually, it's an Uncrustable or something else. When I became aware of this particular incident, that, the way that was handled was completely wrong. And I talked about that with our food service folks. It just definitely could have been handled differently, and I can, you know, I can share with you privately how it should have been handled. When you go through the line, you know, when you get to the end, you punch in your key codes, and if you're, if you've already charged over three times or you're out of it, then you get the little sack lunch. And so this particular employee just took this away, and for whatever reason, felt like it was dumped in the trash can while everybody's looking, and it was just inappropriate, for sure. I don't know if they came up with this no charging because it's the end of the year, like, we're gonna charge all year, but we get to the last.
I think they wanna zero out. I feel like they wanna get the accounts in order so it doesn't go into the negative and that state there.
Yeah. And I will say, on a side note, and we'll know a little bit more here in the next couple of weeks. I know I have a couple of board members, part of that food service program that we're taking a look at. We have petitioned to the state for CEP eligibility, which is free breakfast and lunch for all students. It may come at a small deficit to the board, but we're hoping that we qualify. We've had some mixed reviews on that, so we're waiting to find out. You could hear in the future that we do qualify and that there'll be free breakfast and lunch for all students, but we're not getting the cart ahead of the horse there, but thank you for bringing that up, and it's something we're looking at. We did address that situation with that employee and just how it was particularly handled. So just to give you an update there. I do have some things to share in just a quick board update tonight. Last Tuesday was our last day for outdoor ed for all fifth grade students, and we had a good three days. And so if you don't recall how we have to do it now, ever since COVID, they can't accommodate our whole fifth grade class, which is disappointing because one of the big reasons we did it was to unify that, that group coming from six elementaries before they go to the middle school. And we did it in two overnights and three days. They were long and exhausting couple of days, but then after COVID, they couldn't handle the overnight situation anymore. So now we go in what we call three one-day experiences. And so we have two elementaries go on one day, to the next, and to the next. We currently continue to do Wilderness Survival. We get every student a T-shirt, and the T-shirt unifies them. It says the class of two thousand, you know, and it has their year on there. I think this one was thirty-two, if I'm not mistaken. So they all come looking together, and we intermix the two schools that are together. When we had all six, we intermixed all six schools, which I still think is the best way to go about it. But Camp New Hop is really interesting. They do reptiles and mammals, and you can see there's a gecko, and there's a snake, and they get to kind of handle all kinds of things. Some are squeamish, some just jump right in both hands. Whoops. Archery is also there. We have some kids who, it's their first time, and some who are really, really good, but they all get a chance to kind of experience that. Lunch is really nutritious there. Oftentimes, you see the salad bar here. They can eat as much of that stuff as they want. All right? Obviously, the main entree, and they even serve dessert, which I kinda like myself, but sometimes we're shying away from that stuff. But we kinda serve ourselves. We sit around tables. The tables are numbered. It's kind of this community partnership. You know, some clean, some bring drinks, and it's, it's just a really neat experience. We go down to the stream. It's part of Allen Creek. John Fry attends it all three days with me. He's our videographer. And so we're down there. They're finding crawdads, snails, fish, really learning about the ecosystem. And our teachers really do a marvelous job of, of almost giving them some pretext as to what they're gonna learn, because when these counselors are saying, talk about scavengers, talk about producers, talk about, I mean, they're just, and they're like, boy, you guys are really sharp. And John and I just shake our head. We're pretty proud of that, you know? But they love getting down into the stream, and they take a neat little ride in a covered wagon, not a covered wagon, but a wagon. wagon, not a covered wagon, but a wagon. And so that's a neat experience. And then this is probably one of their most exciting experiences. It's a zip line. And so it really, really is neat to see the ones who are really scared but overcome that little fear and will step off. And sometimes we have to send them up two or three different times. I mean, we don't make them go up, but we encourage them. And we had one young lady who came down, couldn't do it. Took her over to the side. We hooked her up to something else, let her feel what it was like, talked about scooting to the edge. And when she finally went, she was so proud of herself. She walked back and like, I did it! I did it! You know? I did have to share this, so.
You did.
Dalby went with us. He always drives the kids out. He's so enthusiastic. And I looked at Dalby and I said, hey, are you going this year? And he said, what do you mean? I said, come on. You can get up there. By golly, he, he said, okay. I thought, oh, he's just going to give us this, this little tough. He got up there. And I'll play this for you. It only lasts a couple of seconds.
(crowd cheering)
I didn't know if he was going to back away at that time or not. And this sits up there, probably a good 60 feet in the air. We'll have to ask you about that. And any board members that would like to do that, I would, I'd welcome your participation next year. Some upcoming events, as you can see here, our baseball team plays tomorrow at home. It's the district semifinals, and they are having an incredible year. I have only lost three games all year. I think they're over 20 wins now. They are the Cardinal Conference champions in our last year in that conference. So tomorrow night, if you're not doing anything, 5 o'clock, we have a number of folks moving on to track at the OHSA Regionals in Pick North. So you can see, we've got really good hurdler and Marissa Rutter, good girls four-by-one team, 400-meter, 800-meter runners, and our boys four-by-four. So we still have some things going on in that world. We may even find out tonight, we might be co-champs in softball. So it really depended upon the outcome of another contest. Wanted to share this with you. I shared it with you in pictures, but it didn't do it justice. So John got behind the magical camera that he likes to do and put it to some music. It lasts three minutes. But this biography day at Columbia by second-grade students was impressive. So many of the kids dressed up as their biography character, and every student did a PowerPoint. They also had a three, like a poster board, you know, with three sides? And they had a shtick, a spiel, that when you walked up, and I might say, hi, Mr. Wrigley, and he would just give it to me, every one of them. And I'll go ahead and play this so you can see it.
Did you know I tried over 1,000 times to invent the line "All by safety, three-year-old boy from runaway train"? And a man tried to name his son Thomas Sessi, and I said, no, 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 it's either for it.
I'm telling you, I'm a first-year freshman, and I'm a third-year freshman. Do you own that name?
Just two words in a box, that's a good one.
Grandma never liked her son, didn't want dad ever again.
Jackie, do you know me, Tony?
I'm not surprised you think that leads up to me.
Hi, I'm Alvin Martin, Marcus is, and please, the Mavericks.
Hi, I'm Ethan Turner, I'm a minor, I'm a mother lover, and me, David, I'm a writer.
Alexandra Graham, taught at Washington School for Death. Alexandra Graham, ran for the governor, who's a patriot, like, lost her. Alexandra Graham, is a war dog, a monster.
If you never had me, we would never have God. And when I moved, I had 32 of God, and I'm a sacred Pennsylvania.
Thank you, John, for doing that. Appreciate that.
That was wonderful.
Yes, thank you so much.
And so these were second-grade students, and every class came down, and they, every class got to walk, kind of do the walk. And so these kids were presenting to every class and, of course, their parents. And so I'll tell you what, that second graders, not only putting it together, but just taking on the vocalization of saying who they are, but they.
I mean, it doesn't appear like they're second graders.
No.
No. Or like 4th grade.
Yeah. So I had, we had, we had to add that to the agenda tonight.
That was awesome. Thank you.
The music's so soothing. Senior awards night is coming up. It's May 23rd, and so 6:30 at the auditorium, if you're interested in seeing that. Our 8th graders are taking off to Washington, D.C. on May 28th, really late this year, but they are heading to Washington, D.C., and will be back on the, actually, the teacher's last day. And then, of course, kind of the moment of the year where we get to celebrate a new transition, a new chapter for seniors. Graduation will be at Energy Fieldhouse at 3:00 P.M. I'll be sending you out some additional information this week to help kind of be a part of that. But it'll be very similar. Right now, we have 274 graduates in this particular class. And then, of course, the last day of school is next Thursday, not this Thursday, May 30th, with a two-hour early release. And it's hard to believe another school year is really winding down. So anyway, that's the, that's the update. And so under items of information, you'll see that at the bottom about commencement. No items for board approval in this section tonight.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you for that update. Moving on to curriculum instruction and student achievement. Dr. Bennett.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about the fifth article, Four Practical Tips for Improving as a Teacher and Maintaining Habit Set Activity, excuse me, Actively Focus on Your Professional Improvement. I should leave these off. Can help you be a more confident and impactful teacher. And this article is by Daniel Bergman. And they point out that the best teachers get even better in what you do on a daily basis is what he's talking about and encouraging you to do. He's saying, for inspiration, reflect on previous accomplishments outside of education. For example, your hobbies and other things that you've had success in. And purposeful practicing, he said, practice doesn't make perfect, but it makes permanent. It becomes a habit, which I thought was interesting. Harry Wong has some YouTube videos that were also good that you can click on. And they, he talks about effective teaching practices, and one of them is better questioning. And there's an article, a paper, that's open access that they actually have a link to that you can look at. And it talks about the efficacy of questioning techniques in a classroom and the most effective way to get students involved. Of course, we know is to question them about what you're teaching and to make them think about the content and to gain feedback, then also let you know if they've understood what you've taught. So that's one of the things he suggests, how important questioning is. He also has questioning techniques, attention, voice, pause, and contact, content that he discusses. And the second is recognizing milestones and including milestones that you've achieved through obstacles. And he points out, which I thought was a very good point, is that sometimes we learn the best when we make mistakes or when we fail, and that kids are the same way. And teachers can learn best from when a class doesn't work. You've learned a good lesson. And he says, you know, we need to recognize those milestones and make note of them. The third is monitoring your progress, review, reflect, and record. And when I started to select this, I thought, maybe this isn't the right time to be talking about how to improve as teaching when the year's over. And then I thought, no, it really is a good time to reflect on how the year's gone, what's gone right, and what you want to change for the next year. And then the last is to find a mentor and someone that's going to inspire and encourage you and be there for you and give you some good pedagogical tools that you may not have otherwise known about. And then you can become a mentor to somebody else. And we all know that you learn the best when you teach others, so he points that out. And then the sixth article is about, this was kind of interesting, Mrs. Cohen's class in Texas. She's an elementary teacher of second graders, and she loves the Dallas Mavericks. So her classroom is full of memorabilia from the Dallas Mavericks. And she put it on Facebook, and one of the players, Derek Lively, saw it on Facebook. So he sent, he paid for tickets for the whole class to go to a game, which was pretty amazing. And then in response, the kids were so grateful that they set up a lemonade stand to raise money for his favorite charity. And when he heard about that, he came with his mother and brought some T-shirts, free T-shirts for the kids. And he also actually donated a pair of shoes that they were using in math class for measurement and so forth. So it became a brilliant, unique relationship that's inspired the kids. Even those who weren't for the Dallas Cowboys were impressed. So I thought that was something that, you know, you use what, what you love, and then it inspires the kids to love it too, and you can use that in your teaching. So I hope that gives you, there, there are some other good articles too, but I thought that was enough. They did talk about, one thing maybe we should, that's going to impact us, is the National Institute for Early Education Research said that the state preschool enrollment in the state-funded preschool programs has grown by 7% since the pandemic, and that was in 2022, 2023. However, it's grown by 7%, but the number, the child count, is still down because the percentage of children is up, but the number of children that could enroll is down because we're, families are smaller and we aren't having as many children in our society. So that was one of their reports. So I thought that would be interesting to Mrs. Getzmann in particular.
Yes.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
One item for board approval tonight in this section is a college credit plus partnership with Mount Vernon Nazarene University. And again, these are pretty customary. We go through these on a yearly basis, especially for our students who, who take college credit and move beyond, so.
I would entertain a motion for the CCP partnership with MVNU. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Micoladi. Any questions?
No, but just to comment, a parent of one of our freshmen is so grateful that we have these partnerships with colleges and universities. He's over the moon about his daughter being here at Mount Vernon.
Thank you for that. Any others? Okay. Would you call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Micoladi?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I just gave you that for your slideshow when I opened it up.
Mrs. Forney?
I'll let you take over. All right. It's the financial report, obviously. This is the same, as I give you each month. The first page is the reconciliation. You can see the cash that we have here. This is all accounts at the end of April. So if you scroll down, you can see, you can go down there. And then the next page is, this is the sheet where I try to make sure that this year's spending and revenue is right on target, and it is. Obviously, in the top part, you can see that, as usual, several of the items are all 100% in or around 100% because of the tax collections. The one that's 82, that's the state funding, should be around 83, so that's correct. The other one's actually a little bit higher than what we expected, so that's good. And on the expenditures part, if you look clear down at the bottom, we're at 81, should be at 83, so we're actually underspending a little bit, which is good. That's what I want to do. So this is as of April. We have obviously two more months to go, but our, this, this line, the shaded line, comes directly from the forecast, so you'll be able to see that should be, we should end this year with our general fund cash about what we think it should be. So this is our interest. You can see, we went clear up to 434,000. You can see the breakdown there at the bottom. And then the rest of the reports are just the checks that were issued for the month and the revenue. The forecast, this, I made it as big as I could. It's pretty little. This basically is the forecast that we talked about in January. We, I made a couple of changes that we talked about during that meeting, so I wasn't going to go through a lot of it because this is basically, we wanted to, a lot of detail in January, and we are right on target for this year and, and next year. During the year, we'll, we'll go month by month and make sure that we're staying right where we think we should be. And remember, this is general fund only, so. And then this is just an analysis. This is one of the reports that gets presented by the, gets created by the software that I use, and it's, there's some things on here that I think are just kind of interesting. A couple of things I won't go into too much, but.
Get it out quick.
Okay, so this is what we started out the year with. The July 1 balance is the 10 million, and the ending cash balance is the higher amount. And you can see that we, oh, I don't know what happened to it. It's the 13 million. It flew across the top up there. It should have been over the blue one, but anyway. So the increase in that is, some of that is from the increase in state funding, and some of it is the increase from the tax revenue that we got this year. So I like to be able to look at it and say, well, how did that happen? But that's how it happened, so. So always kind of interesting to keep in mind that our local taxes is about half, and state funding is about half, and all other revenues is a little bit of the other. Those are tax abatements, fees that we collect, interest on investments. That's that little sliver of 5%, and the others are the state funding and the local Personnel costs, obviously. The goal, ever since I've been a treasurer, you hear, people think you should stay under 80% for your salaries and benefits. This is general fund only, so we're doing a good job with that. Our purchase services, remember, those are things. Our purchase services, remember, those are things like utilities, when we have to pay organizations for physical therapy, occupational therapy, when we don't have staff that we have to hire out, those are purchase services. And then all other, of course, are supplies and our, we don't spend a whole lot out of general fund on equipment, but other things like that. Our supplies, which also, by the way, the supplies includes supplies for maintenance and supplies for transportation, because a lot of times we think of supplies, we think of paper and pencils, crayons for the kids, but also it's operations across the district. So it doesn't include food service, of course, because that's separate, but all the materials and supplies that we buy for fuel for the buses and all those, those are considered supplies, so. I'm not going to go to this too much, but this is just where we look like we are right now between now and 2028. You see that last year is the first year that looks like our expenditures are going to be higher than our revenues, and that's what the forecast shows. And annual change in revenue, again, you can see the change, that 1.07, that's three years average from 20 to 23. Remember, that was during COVID, so everything has to be taken through the screen of COVID. And then the projected annual revenue change from 2024 to 2028 is 3%. Again, that's increases in state funding, increases in taxes, the federal, this property tax will go up a little bit next year because we only got half a year this year. And then also the expenditures, our historical annual expenditure change was low because, remember, during COVID, we used some of the ESSR money to cover some of the general fund. But starting next year, if you look at 3.61, all those things are going to be paid for out of general again. So that's why ordinarily, those would be closer together. Your historical change would be about the same as your projected change, but those are going to be, and this is unfortunately, this particular year, you're going to see that more than, next year won't look like that. Days cash on hand, I know I sent you guys out something about that. A lot of districts across the state are using that, doing a board policy that shows what the board wants to have as days cash on hand. If it looks like at the end of anybody's forecast year that we're not going to have enough for that, then the board starts to take action, whether they think about asking for more money, or they look at places to cut. But it's sort of like a, just a guideline. And so we don't have that in place right now. A lot of districts use 90 days. So in other words, if the bottom fell out and we didn't get any more money, we could still operate for 90 days. Obviously, that's not much, but, and we don't expect that to ever happen. But they do have that guideline, and it's a trigger. And so probably if we ever did decide to do that, you know, on any given month, I would update you and say, well, we have this many days of cash now, operating cash in general fund. So this is what the current forecast shows, which is obviously very generous as of right now, but it won't stay that way.
And the change in that wouldn't happen monthly. Really, you're looking more yearly at days cash on hand. So if you would drop below a trigger day, a trigger of 90 days, then you might say, okay, how can we stay above the 90? What cuts can we make? Or if you feel like you're two years away from being 50 days, then now you're starting to talk about levies and different things like that.
Exactly. This number, I know Bill and I, neither one of them were thrilled about these, but this is a number that the software, excuse, they use, they use birth rates, live birth rates in Knox County, and not Knox County, but in our school district, and then they use trends. So these numbers are just what's used for the forecast, and, you know, they're, they may or not, may or may not be exactly right, but that's the numbers that are used in here. And it comes into, go ahead, Bill.
And it does speak a little bit to what you just mentioned about birth rates. I mean, families are having fewer and fewer kids. We're a demographic, we're the age, the older age demographic, and, you know, we believe that we're going to see that kind of trending a little differently as we get new housing starts, but none of that's built into this. It's just all based on.
So certainly, this won't probably be our future, but when the software picks up these numbers from, they go to the health department, they go to all those places, so that's why that's going to look like that. But these numbers are what's used for the next couple of slides, which you'll see, the per pupil general fund. So obviously, as the enrollment goes down and the expenditures go up a little bit, you're going to see those. Now, again, this is just for information. I'm not sure that any of this is going to exactly happen, but it's good to look at. And then this one I like a lot, and I've talked to a couple other people about this. This is resident property owner's portion. It's not all taxes, it's not all property tax, it's for our residential property owners' taxes, is 39% of a per pupil expenditure of general fund. So ours is $69. So if you look at that, and we actually did a little presentation with some other people about, that's $27 a day that the property taxes pay per pupil. So if you talk about, and we talked about, and this is some other treasurers that I, we pick your child up at your house or nearby, we take them to school safely, we take them in there where they're met with, you know, by professionals, caring people who take good care of them, teach them, nurture them, help them with lunches and meals, talk to them about all kinds of other things that they need to have help with, and then get them back home safely. $27 a day. And when we talk about the cost of everything else in the world, we're trying to think about, what else could you do for $27 a day? So I know a lot of districts are using that number when they start to talk about if they're needing, you know, operating levies and so forth, that it just sort of, just sort of shows what a value public schools are when you talk about it that way, so. This just shows the change from the November. So the one that we did in November, I know you'll remember that I kept saying, this isn't right because we didn't know the property values yet. So there were no changes on the expenditure side because those we felt good about, but some change, but the other things went up after the property values went up. So those are just changes between the November, which was considered the base forecast. And I think that's it. So what else do we have here? We have a letter of understanding. This is a, this is a sort of a consortium. We've got three other school districts, I think, if you want to pop that open real quick. East Knox and Danville.
South Clear Fork.
Yeah, East Knox and Clear Fork. So they have Title I money that, they don't get a whole lot of it, but it's for their non-public schools. So rather than them trying to figure out how to spend some, and us, we are actually working with the ESC, and it's all going to be, it's all coordinated together, and it's in like a, like a consortium. And it just gets used first come, first served, but has to be used for non-pubs. So it's not a lot of money, but it makes it a little easier for each individual district to just send it over to us, and then it gets used up at the end of the year. But this is an agreement that says that all the districts are okay with it, and everybody will sign it, and then we'll have it counter signed, so. This is the first year we've done it. It's a full Title I. And then this is a tutoring, this is for the next one there, the agreement. Again, this is money that the districts, that Seventh Day Adventist runs to the Mount Vernon schools, and they have tutors that they pay out of their money from this nonpub money. So it runs through us, and so we have to have an agreement with them, and we'll get that signed and have it signed by them.
So when we do our title monies, our CCIP, Eric works closely with those districts that are within our boundaries, and he has to make sure that they get a certain portion of our funding, and then we become the flow-through. So they tell us what they want, they bring it through us, and between Eric and the Treasury Office, they got to coordinate all of that.
We have to be, we have to be really careful what we spend it on, and we have to make sure that they're very careful what they spend it on. We, Lynette does a really good job of that, she manages it, and we also sometimes have trouble getting them to spend it because it's not a lot of money, and we have it for two years at a time, and I'm talking about auxiliary services, not the title, but they have a two-year budget, so if they don't spend it all one year, they can spend it the second year, but if they don't spend it the second year, we have to send it back. So sometimes we have to call them and say, hey, you know, let's buy some stuff here, so. And then we have some donations to Dan Emmett from the Mulberry Street Church School Supplies, to Twin Oak from the Farmhead Poker Run Club, Carol Daley, $100 for student lunches, to East, and somebody's going to have to tell me how to.
Yvonne.
Yvonne.
Mm-hmm.
Daley, $60 for unpaid lunch charges, and then an anonymous donation to the high school for overdue fees for graduation for any students who have fees that are unpaid. And that's all I have.
Thank you for all of that. That was a lot, but very, very helpful to go through all of those details, so thank you for that. I would entertain a motion for fiscal services. Thank you, Dr. Bennett. In second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dai. Any additional questions?
Just thank you. That's not a question. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yes. All right. Would you call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dai?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, business services. Moving on to business services and legislative liaison.
Yes, I have a very, very brief report. HB 250 was signed into law by Governor DeWine. This requires school boards to adopt a cell phone usage policy. And in addition to that, there were 24 bills introduced in the Senate and the House, and you can look at those on your own. In federal actions, there is a proposal to increase access to school-based mental health services. And if you have any questions about anything, let me know, but I want it to be very brief this evening.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
We will have to, maybe through a board work session and just conversations, talk about that cell phone policy. The state of Ohio is going to be putting out some templated plans. I've had some preliminary discussions with our principals. You know, I think probably if there's a leader in the, in the race right now, it's to limit cell phone use to a great extent. The challenge of that is, is limiting it, not very often, and then that, does that become all you do, are we the cell phone police? And so trying to figure out how we can kind of navigate that the right way, when it's violated, then what do you do then? Do you actually collect them? Do you put them in pouches? So we're all wrestling with the same kind of things. I think educationally speaking, there's not a one of us probably that disagrees that they'd be better left at home, but the reality is a lot of kids stay after school and do things, and so there's a reason for it, but they don't need access, at least in my opinion, throughout the school day. There are some parents who will differ with me, and, you know, I guess I hearken back to a day that if it was an emergency, call the school office, and we can go get your child, and, you know, we can make sure everybody's safe. So you'll have to think about that. We'll let you know how some other districts around us are doing and what kind of policies are in place. I think once you develop the policy, that's not as much the difficult part, it's the enforcement part, and because you're going to be tested, and you've got to be conflict, you know, you got to be really solid on how you want to address it moving forward, so. And you know, the day where they said, oh, and I was a proponent of this, when we didn't have Chromebooks for students, it could be used more as an educational device. We now have Chromebooks, and students can have their own device like that. I don't know that it needs to be the educational tool it once was. Yeah. I don't know if a child psychologist would have a thought on that or not. I can, I can imagine.
There must be schools that have data on schools that are putting policies on how they manage it. What works.
Right, right.
Have to find it.
Something, yeah.
And there's got to be the right threading of the needle there, so that's what we'll try to do. We have to have, I think, we want to try to have something in place by next school year, so as we look at student handbooks and really kind of gain some of that guidance, we'll get a sense for it. Do have one item for board approval in this section tonight, it's that ESC service agreement for St. Vincent and Seventh Day Adventist, and that, again, that's the kind of partnership we're talking about.
I would entertain a motion for the ESC service agreement. Thank you, Mr. Workman. In second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any questions or comments hearing them? Would you call the roll? Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dai?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann? Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. And moving on to student services.
No item for information today, but we do have one item for board approval, and it's the graduating class of 2024. We currently have 274 students pending the completion of, you know, some of the state and Board of Education requirements, but we're incredibly hopeful that all 274 will walk across the stage this next Sunday.
I would entertain a motion for approval of the graduating class of 2024.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dai, and second, Dr. Bennett. Any comments?
I have a question. Would it be possible to get a breakdown on any certifications that our students earn, like the Global Scholar, and it would just be interesting to know what percentage.
Specialty. I have a feeling.
The Career Center does that for any certifications for students.
I think you might find that in the senior awards night. I think they, I think they list all the seniors, and they kind of put some things they have. Obviously, the Career Center is really geared towards those certifications and credentialing kinds of things. I can certainly.
Don't they have to have some seals on their?
Yeah, and whether they put those inside the, you know, the nice graduating thing, I don't know. So let me check on that.
I was just interested.
Kathy, do you know anything about that?
I'm sorry, I lost not your answer.
I'm sorry. That's the negative about being here, but because of diploma seals and things like that, can you hear me at all?
Yes.
Do we list those now in the graduation program? You know, what seals kids get? Is that a senior awards night kind of a thing?
I'm not sure if they're listed in the commencement program or not. I know they are on the diploma, that's all the transcript, you know, but I don't want to do a count as to how many kids receive their business seal, how many kids receive their seal. It was a count of the adults that are now here as a coordinator.
If we find that they don't put it in the program, I think it is valuable information. We'll see if we can't get it for our purview to kind of get a sense how many, where kids are getting their seals and.
It would be nice to keep track of that, you know, to see if we're improving in that More opportunities for our kids the better, right? Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any additional? Okay, would you call the roll? Ms. Regola-Dai?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann? Yes. Motion carried. Moving on to personnel certificated.
Just one item for information tonight, a salary change notice for Kyle Klein-Denz. Under recommended items for board approval, we have a whole host of things. Believe it or not, we're already talking about the fall of next year with supplementals as it's now the end of the year, but we have one retirement, Mike Pausderek, and you heard him talk about how he just kind of came to that realization, a number of different resignations there. As was noted, Laura Rockte did accept a position real close to her home in Westerville, same position. We're going to have to find someone for power of the pen.
I think there is someone.
Okay. Because they've been quite successful. And of course, those are some of the other ones. Ryan Burris, as you know, he took a job at the Career Center. And so you Career Center board members, you took one from us.
We had nothing to do with it.
He's actually.
We just approved it.
He's moving into their college U business, which is a really, really good program. Substitute teachers, home instructors, couple supplementals there. And then employment for next year, we have hired some folks. We do have now a second school psychologist. Yay! I mean, it's been forever.
Happy to see that. That was great.
And hopefully, we just, we continue to stay there, and we are going to, we're going to try to lessen their workload a little bit, and we're going to try to use some additional resources if we can. going to try to use some additional resources if we can. Couple new hires. As you know, we're looking at our CAB classroom, that's our communication and behavior classrooms at Pleasant. So we have hired a couple teachers for that, and they'll be under the direction of not only the principal at Pleasant Street, but under Becca, who is our behavior specialist. You also have, well, a couple new, a couple other new positions, Wigan Street, reading specialist, and an art teacher at Dan Emmett. Mary Jo Berensmeyer is going to continue to work with us to try to finish out this Latin group, and then we'll kind of be down to, you know, really those two languages. We have been looking at sign language. That's been something we've talked about, so, but that may be something we consider later on. And then you've got this whole list of supplemental contracts for the fall. You can go down through there and take a look at those as you go. A number of home instructors. We've had some transition of staff as different positions open up and the dominoes start to fall. So we do have some movement there at Columbia and at Wigan Street. And again, we always approve our substitute teachers every year and make sure that they have the proper credentialing. And then we have our pupil activity contracts as well. So those items for your approval tonight.
I would entertain a motion for the certificated items. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ward. And second, I'm Mr. Workman. Any questions, comments?
Just thank you. All the great job of finding all these wonderful people.
Absolutely. And keeping.
There's more to come.
My question would be, as we add that C A B classroom to Pleasant Street, has there been any, any talk at all of adding an assistant principal over there at Pleasant Street as we add things over there and the dynamics of that building as well?
It has been. Currently, we have a part-time person helping out three days a week there, and so that, it's not out of the realm of possibility in our current operating structure. You know, we're probably looking at its max of adding sixteen students total. And of that sixteen, you're going to have quite a few who are already Pleasant Street students as well. So those two classrooms are underway as far as construction is concerned. I know they, you know, when you hear the word, the old locker rooms, they will not be locker rooms anymore. I mean, we just put new H V A C systems in both of them, both heating and air, bringing in outside air. They're doing a drop ceiling, putting in all brand-new lighting. They'll have carpeted on the floors, the ceiling, or the walls will be painted, new desks and stuff like that will be there. It'll, it'll feel just like any other classroom in the building. And I know there's been some people who have had some concerns about that, but I think we'll alleviate those through the work we do.
Great. That's fantastic. All right. Thank you for that discussion. Would you call the roll? Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dai?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatzman?
Yes.
Motion carried. And we have one additional pupil activity, and I would entertain a motion for that. Additional contract. Thank you, Dr. Bennett.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dai. And would you call the roll? Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dai?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatzman?
abstain.
Thank you. Someone will be very happy. Thank you. She's in her element, I'm not sure, but she loves what she does. All right. Moving on to classified staff.
No items for information at this time, just a number of items for board approval, three two-year contracts, some additional summer work crew folks, and Lisa Perry has put in her retirement. It is effective the thirty-first of August, so we talked about bringing her here, but she respectfully declined and said she's starting the year. I think depending on where we go with the food service piece, she wants to be, to assist in that transition if that's what's necessary, and then we'll have to decide where we go from there. So, so we reluctantly said we'll, we'll put it on the board agenda, but it'll be for eight thirty-one of twenty-four.
I would entertain a motion for the classified staff. Second? Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dai.
Yes.
And Dr. Bennett?
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I know Lisa has been a very valuable asset to the food services, and that consistency has been key as we've made some changes over the last few years, so I appreciate her helping us out in that realm, so. Okay. Would you call the roll?
Ms. Regola-Dai?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatzman?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay. At this time, we will open the floor for board member comments, and let's see, Mr. Ward.
Okay. Well, I would like to congratulate again our retirees. They've put in a lifetime of work to benefit our community, benefit our kids, and I know we as a group certainly appreciate that. I also want to congratulate our graduates coming up here soon. And again, a lifetime of work to get to this, to get to this walk across that stage. There's just a, there's just a lot of great things that have been going on. Want to congratulate our administration, our teachers for another really good year for our district, and I just certainly appreciate all those efforts.
Thank you. Ms. Regola-Dai?
Thank you. To those who are still here and to those who may be watching at home, everything is possible only through the coordination of our community and our great public school here at Mount Vernon City Schools. We couldn't do it without our community. We thank them, and we thank our great staff from the top to every single person who cleans and scrubs and takes care of our buses. You are all invaluable, and I'm really proud to, of our students. I think they have really accomplished so much this year, and I'm looking forward to another year, a successful year next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bennett?
I think everything's been said, but I've enjoyed the programs, the music programs, seeing the little children perform and our older kids perform, and we have some amazing awards and athletes, you know. Our kids are just doing, you know, I'm just so proud of them. And our teachers, you know, our buildings are old, but our teachers are what make the difference, and our people, our staff. So I'm, I'm just very proud of our district, Mr. Cedars, a great leader, and our principals and our administrators, and I'm so thankful to be a part of Mount Vernon City Schools. And I congratulate the retirees and our graduates, and I hope everyone will have a safe and healthy summer and come back refreshed and ready to begin again, so.
Mr. Workman?
My checks are gone. But no, I think another successful school year. It was so enjoyable to see the retirees and those that presented, and the number of years and dedicated years that so many people have put in is so inspiring, and I know they're all ready for retirement, but you can still tell that they would, they could keep going if they wanted to, and very inspiring to see that, so very enjoyable. Certainly enjoyed the Wigan Street program. Again, you know, having children of that age present, you forget that they're, you know, third and kindergarten. I mean, the two, the kindergarteners just stood here for that long. I was impressed by that. So that was really neat, but looking forward to, to graduation coming up on Sunday, probably more so for the air conditioning that we'll be sitting in. But certainly with nearly three hundred students again this year, quite an accomplishment, so looking forward to that.
Absolutely, yes. All right. I will close by saying I do know, I'm familiar with the Second Step program that Wigan Street is doing their Kinder Buddies with, and it's an amazing program, and I'm glad that they picked up and buddied those kids together. They did a fantastic job, and I think mentoring and having the kids mentor each other is key. When they can talk, you know, friendship and kindness and show that and model it to the younger ones, it's, that's key, so.
They're learning leadership.
Absolutely. Leadership right along with it. So that's really exciting. And on the retirement, one consistent thing I noticed on all of the retirees, they spent the vast majority of their time in Mount Vernon City Schools, and that speaks volumes, that they are here for twenty and thirty-plus years dedicating to our community, and that, that's just exciting to see. So that was, that was very exciting. I think Dr. Bennett approached the alcolites that all of our students are receiving, and I know at this point in time with the, or the spring activities, those are starting to come, be presented to our student athletes, and that's exciting to always see when they get those. We used to recognize them at our meeting, and it would be kind of nice just to have that total list. We see some of the academic alcolites, but some of the athletic ones are as, pretty exciting to see as well. And then I would be remiss, I read today, one of those national holidays is band director holiday, national holiday, so a shout-out to all of those that help in our band and music departments.
Music departments.
Absolutely. We have a phenomenal music department, and so I thank them for all of their hard work. Music is key for our students, and I think it's just one more outreach for our students that is so important to well-round all of our students. So big shout-out to our music department today on National Band Day. So that's all I have.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I forgot to mention the senior citizens luncheon.
Oh, yes.
It was wonderful, and Mr. Cedar always does a great job, and our students performed, and you could just see our seniors are like, wow.
Yeah, I've had several comments.
They were blown away by a lot of what the kids did. Some of their musical skills were just amazing, you know.
That's great.
I'm, I'm glad we get to show off our kids.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah. Mount Vernon should be very proud. Absolutely. So anybody else?
I would just say.
Mr. Cedar?
You know, with all of the things that go on around us in this world, if you get just kind of a little uptight, or you know, the noise gets loud, just go watch our kids.
Absolutely.
So when you see them here and how well they present themselves, when I was at Columbia earlier in the week and second graders doing that, and, and our kids who, you know, host our senior citizens, I mean, there's a lot of good things going on, and sometimes even though I kind of make a little light of it, I think sometimes our kids can teach some of our adults, you know, about kindness and respect and some of those things, so. And you know, even though it's the end of the year, the work's not done, we still got a lot of work to do. Summer's a busy time for Judy and I. On May, here in May, I'm going to have Mr. Ward and Ms. Regola-Dai assist us with the food service work, so we're going to be taking a look at that. Our Facility Advisory Committee gets kicked off on June eleventh. We're starting to get back those invitations. I'm still waiting on one to see if that one's coming in. We have, we've invited about fifty-five folks, and so we're kind of getting a sense for where that's going to be. So there's, there's a lot of work to do yet in the summer as we do some programming things, and we'll continue to share with you.
Great. Thank you for that.
I do have executive session for tonight for appointment, appointment.
I would entertain a motion for executive session. Second? Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dai. Thank you, Mr. Workman. Ms. Regola-Dai? Yes. Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatzman?
Yes.
Thank you.